Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a July 19th, 2022 city council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Gesmi?
Here.
Ronenberger?
Here.
Lundell?
Here.
Montgomery?
Here.
And Altough?
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Bringle, to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns of the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the government of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they will be removed from the meeting. Speakers should not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments will be made at the hearing. The city council generally not act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on future agenda. Babe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my hope that you'd look at this information. It's all generated from this building and the city of Cannon Falls. And first and foremost is the memo that Neil Jensen wrote last September. It said that, it states very clearly that the DMV has a revenue deficit of $30,000 to $35,000 per year. And if you go to the very next page, because the audit just came out, you folks approved it, and I don't know how many of you read it, but I did, and the audit shows that there was a profit of $66,000 and change in 2021, and it was only open until October 1st. That didn't make much sense to me, so I dug a little deeper. If you go to 2020, it shows that there was a deficit of about $28,000 and a couple hundred bucks. But if you remember, you folks closed the DMV for several months. It was COVID, and you did get COVID relief to the tune of like three quarters of a million dollars. Now, I realize that that's not all for the DMV, but a substantial amount of that was earmarked for labor, which would include the DMV. On the next page, on March 17th, which was probably one of the greatest days of all time, St. Patrick's Day in 2020, the council directed staff to close the DMV. It's right there before your very eyes, for several months. On the next page, the finance committee recommended to shut the DMV down permanently. Now, there was some talk about a private contractor. I've not heard anything. I'm not at every meeting, but I've yet to hear anything, or I'm wondering if anything's going to happen at all. But it was closed on false information. The DMV has not lost $28,000, or $30,000 to $35,000 every year, and I'm wondering if any of you even looked at the audit and spotted this. Now, I know it's tough. I've sat in that chair, and that audit's thick, and it's in-depth, but it's right there. And what I also am wondering is, now that you have this information in front of you, maybe you'll reconsider, or what is it you will do now that you have the true reading of what's going on? I went back to 2019. It made $27,340. So I've only found one year in which it lost money, and it still wasn't $30,000 to $35,000. So, and if you go to the very last page, that's the cover letter of the audit. That's even inaccurate. It shows that John and Bill and Mary Jill are going to serve till 2024, and I don't believe that's accurate, and I don't believe Campbell Knutson is our attorney anymore. I think they've been gone for over a year and a half. Thank you for your time.
There's nobody else on there, so we'll close the public input. We'll get right into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. This is a long list, so bear with me. Item A: Justin and correct claims for the accounting period ending July 12th, 2022. Item B: Minute meetings for the July 5th, 2022 city council meeting. Item C: Accept a paramedic resignation and approve to fill a position. Item D: Set the council work session on August 16th, 2022. Item E: Second reading and adoption of ordinance 1385, amending the city code, Chapter 151, relating to public utilities. Item F: Approve the conveyance of Min dot partial 2506-034-208 PID 52-100-0760 Riverside Park. Item G: Approve the Third Street Bridge Approach, black topping, on the south side. Item H: Approve alley repair. Item I: Approve the Cannon Cruise, Cannon Car Cruisers Club request. Item J: Approve new lights for the city parking lot. Item K: Approve a curb and catch basin repair. Item L: Approve a vehicle auction for the public works truck. Item M: Approve a pickleball court at Eastside Park. Item N: Approve the hiring of a police officer. Item O: Resolution 2639, approving a conditional use permit in variance for 31720, 318th Street. Item P: Resolution 2640, approving a conditional use permit for PID 52700-0090, Stalag Holdings. Item O: Resolution 2641, approving a conditional use permit for 6686 Bluff Drive. And item R: Resolution 2642, approving a conditional use permit for 6682 Bluff Drive. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? I should maybe make a note. There's a lot of things on here, but everything on this consent agenda, maybe minus the claims and meanings, all has gone through committee, and they've sent it out to the council for our review, and then hopefully they prove it tonight, so. But hearing, no, uh, no, nothing, though. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Lundell, and a second by Bringle to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, council business. City compost site. Dan, you want to take that?
I'm at the last Public Works Commission meeting. We had more discussion about the compost wood yard, and the commission voted and approved to revisit the quotes again for grinding. So I reached out to Showquist Grinding and received another quote from them, as well as Brayton Johnson from Blooming Prairie. And you have those two quotes in front of you. Showquist Grinding changed their quote a little bit. They're now quoting $30,000 for 30 hours of grinding. There's a $1,000 setup fee, and they also gave costs of repairs in case they broke a tooth on the machine. Their quote is good till July 26th. The next quote is from Brayton Johnson. They quoted $600 an hour for their equipment, a $500 setup fee, and both of these grinders estimated about 30 hours of grinding to do down at the yard, so they both came up with that same number. The difference between Showquist and Brayton is Showquist would haul the wood chips, Brayton would leave the wood chips. So $30,000 to grind for 30 hours, plus a $1,000 setup fee and some repair costs if things break, or $18,000 to grind 30 hours, and they would leave the wood chips. So there's things we can do with the wood chips. We can contact District Energy and see if they still want them. Even though they can't get down here to grind, you know, I can reach out to them and see if they still want the wood chips and truck them out of here. Or we could windrow them down at the compost yard and let them decompose to compost. So that's an option. And with our agreement with Reese Farms, we could work that into the compost piles.
Could people just come and pick up the chips, too? I don't know if that's an option, or?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
They have them in the past.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they're six-inch wood chips, so, you know, whatever you want to use them for.
Well, they're pretty different quotes. I mean, this is, this one we just got is pretty low.
Right, and one is trucking the chips out of here.
True.
And one is leaving the chips, so.
Did we go away from the controlled burn for any specific reason?
Well, I went down and I measured the biggest pile. It's 250 feet long, 125 feet deep, and it's 12 to 14 feet high.
It would be burning for the end of, till the end of time.
I think that's, that's a pretty big undertaking, and it's packed very dense. Lot of big logs in there, too, some stumps, so I think it'd be a pretty big undertaking.
I just, I say that because I know that we can control the controlled burn, and we have citizens who have talked to me that they feel like we're getting screwed here because no matter what we do, if it costs money, all the industrial haulers that came here and visited through the years and added up to that pile before we.
Right.
You know, we still have to change the ordinance, and we have to stop that from happening in the future, but the people who are paying the bill are our citizens.
Yeah, going forward, I guess you could, you could just, you know, keep it to residential branches and limbs and compost.
But Public Works Committee is going to be working on a set of rules.
Yes.
Going forward, and we're, we're still currently have it shut down to commercial haulers, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've, I've seen some come down and turn around and go back after they read the sign, so.
Oh, that's good. Some people read. Yeah, I understand what you said, Matt. I absolutely, I'm sympathetic to that, I really am. But, you know, we have let it get this far, and we've got to do something to. At controlled burn, you were talking about how long it would take, and I don't think I'll be alive for it. I mean, that might not be fair, but, you know, I'm certainly not going to be around to see the end of the pile. It just takes so long, and you have to have someone watching it, making sure it doesn't get out of control, and dry weather can cause problem. I don't know. It just sounds like everything's a liability to us.
You know, we had a good thing going when, when we got it ground for free, got it hauled for free, and it went to District Energy.
Exactly.
And it worked out good. The commercial haulers could come in, and so it was a win-win-win, but things have changed.
Right. Do you think there's any chance District Energy will still want stuff, or do you think they're overwhelmed?
Well, I know they're not. They don't need to hardly leave the metro area with all the Emerald Ashbore wood that they have right now. District Energy finally reopened their, their yard to accept chips.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, I, it's not just us south of the metro that we're bringing in wood. It was north of the metro, too, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I feel like Matt does, too, that God forbid the city taxpayers to have to pay, especially if you went with Showquist, $30,000 when the vast majority of that was brought in by non-Cannon Falls folks.
Yeah.
That's tough, although the second bid from Mr. Johnson cuts it almost in half, especially if you include that Showquist put in additional charges if tooth damage and some other things have to be replaced. Usually that's part of a bid, not in addition, too.
That's the doing business.
So I'm, if I read this right, and it's approximately 30 hours, we're talking $18,000 versus $30,000. To me, that seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Well, we got to do something.
So before we go too much further, are we going to have to have this formalized as in a bidding process? You can't just... Don't give me that blank stare.
Well, Neil's on. Neil, can you weigh in on, on this?
Are you here? Neil?
Good evening.
Neil.
No, you can do competitive quotes, and that's what you have in front of you. Anything under $175,000, you can do competitive quotes.
Which both of these qualify as?
Yeah.
Well, actually, that's the, the middle one.
Well, yeah, the middle one, that was the $90,000.
That could be trying.
We've got enough money.
If we don't remove the chips, where does that leave us? I mean, we, what are we going to do with them?
Well, right now, Reese Farms is coming down to, to screen our compost, and after they get done screening, they take, you know, 70% back with them. So that would leave us room to windrow these wood chips and let them decompose, and you can actually mix those in with compost to make better compost.
They decompose pretty fast, don't they, those wood chips?
Well, if you do it correctly, you don't want to, you don't want to turn your, your compost in the winter because then you lose some of your heat. So as long as you can do it right, I think, you know, I'm going to guess 12 to 18 months, and these would probably be compost.
What's, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Brayton Johnson.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion in us by Duncan and a second by Bringle to approve the bid from Brayton Johnson. Is there any other discussion on that?
Is this something he'd be able to start, like, real soon? Did he say anything about that?
Didn't have a timeline.
Okay.
Well, I think something's got to be done, and I don't think it's, it's going to get any cheaper. We're going to have to make the hard decision to go ahead and do it, and before we let anybody else in there.
Go and send no more. Yeah, and then make good rules.
Have to have you guys get some.
Good rules, yeah. Exactly. Yeah.
What, what does the, what does it look like to have commercial haulers, haulers come back in? I know that anyone that I've talked to has said that they're more than willing to pay.
Well, and that's what, that's, that's a really good point, Laura, and Dan and Neil plan to sit down with some of these commercial haulers and see what are, you know, what is realistic? What are you willing to pay? What are you, you know, more than willing to pay? What? You know, let's get it set, and get it set to a place we can stomach and where we can actually, you know, process the wood and get it, get it through. But we don't want to close it down for everybody either. You know, it's just become such a problem.
Yeah, I don't know what, what they're doing now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where they're bringing theirs now, or if they found a better, you know, way to do things or not, but.
But you'll find out. You're going to talk with them and.
Well, you're going to talk to the commercial people, and the Public Works is going to set up some.
Yeah, some rules.
Rules.
Look at some other cities, what they do.
Okay, there's a motion on the table and a second. Is there any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Okay, reports. Kyle?
You can use your arrows. Good evening, city council and the community. I have one big thank you first before I go into my presentation. This last Thursday night, we had our first open airfare, where we had the vendors on the sidewalks of Fourth Street and Mill Street. We had a really good measure of the number of people this time because Lawrence Meats was giving away hot dogs. And at 6:10, now, we started at 4:30, and at 6:10, they had given away all 210 hot dogs. They were out, and the streets were still full. And so this event definitely brought in over 300.
Yeah, because not everybody would have had a hot dog either.
That's exactly right.
Steve.
Steve.
Yeah, yeah. There we go.
All right. We forgive. We did have the Bethel's Rock Band that was the entertainment that night, and, and then also the 25-foot climbing rock wall was a big hit from the Minnesota National Guard, and I do want to thank them for bringing it down. They are bringing it back on August 11th, which will be a fun fest, the good old fun fest that is on Mill Street blocked off at Fourth Street to over the bridge. And so we have the Crescent Hartle family band playing. They are bringing in a guest band. I think it's beyond, no, I'm not even going to try. Sorry about that. But they have a guest band that's going to come with them, as well as the Bethel Rock will do a couple of songs. The rock wall will be coming back again, and I'm looking forward to another fun event in downtown Cannon Falls. Really good response from the retailers. They had people in their stores on Thursday night buying, and that is the best reason to have open airfares and fun fests. And so those particular vendor, or those particular stores had items out on the sidewalks. So they were really trying to draw people in, and so that was a really big thing for them to do. So hopefully we'll see you all on August 11th in downtown Cannon Falls. Now I will switch over. This is the 2021-2022 Cannon Falls advertising campaign. And in 2021, the Chamber received an Explore Minnesota grant for $10,000 to be used for marketing purposes. Then again, in... purposes. Then again, in the spring of, well, not even the spring, but early 2022, we received another grant. And let me just touch the screen. There we go. There's the Explore Minnesota Recovery Grant, ten thousand dollars. As you can see, some of the advertising had partnerships with the City of Cannon Falls EDA and the Cannon Valley Trail. And as we go through the slideshow, you'll see those little asterisks by these areas. Feast Magazine, I gotta give Laura credit. She lays this whole thing out and works with all of the businesses that are part of it. This is from 2021, and she's already working on 2022. They had a big, huge conference in March this last year at Grand O2. So that's a very good moneymaker. Last fall, we also had a big story in Ultimate Travel, and I know that's really way too small to read. If you would like to read it, I do have it with. And, but it's getting our name out there, and that's exactly what it's all about. The next grant, Explore Minnesota Tourism Marketing Grant, goes from January one through December thirty-first of 2022. We received seventy-five-hundred dollars from the Explore Minnesota, but the way we get that money is if we spend another seventy-five-hundred dollars. So a total of fifteen thousand dollars. Again, those partnerships are in place. The AAA Living Magazine, um, in the Minnesota region alone, there's two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand circulation of their magazine, and that goes in the area of Colorado, Iowa, Minnesota, Nebraska, North Dakota, and Wisconsin. And in our online, uh, advertising with them, we had thirteen thousand seven-hundred-and-two impressions, which gave us forty-one clicks and thirty percent CTRs, which is click-throughs. So in other words, they'll click, and then they'll keep clicking into our, our website to see even more. In June, July, and August, we did this, we didn't do this whole spread, but if you notice, Cannon Falls is number one over on the left-hand side. I didn't pay anymore for that. It's just alphabetical, and it worked out for us. What's happening with this page, and if you get AAA, there's a postcard in this magazine that the readers can mark off what communities they wanna receive information from. You can see I put sixty-two on here. Well, we got another thirty-seven yesterday, so we're at ninety-nine. And plus, I've been getting emails in from individuals who aren't even going through the magazine. And so it is definitely working. Our Discover Guide, and I think you're all familiar with that, um, it is done by By All Means Graphics. We printed fifty-seven-hundred-and-fifty copies in March, and we ran out. So we ordered in another thirteen-hundred-and-fifty, and only five-hundred-and-fifty are remaining in the Chamber office right now.
Wow.
So they are going out, fast and furious. Distributions, there's eleven Chambers of Commerce throughout the state of Minnesota that have requested our Discover Guide, and ten of the Minnesota State Welcome Centers have them. Those Welcome Centers get five to seven boxes. I remember the first years I was here, I would send them two or three, and they'd call me, "I need more. Two or three more." So you know what? I'd just send them out right at the beginning. Let's get them out there. The Chamber member names that you see listed get two or more boxes each that they distribute in their place of business. And so we really appreciate that, and we're getting the news out. The Entertainment Guide is, uh, the Entertainment Guide is a monthly publication coming out of By All Means Graphics, and you can see a quarter-page ad. It's the Children's Easter Hunt in the upper-left-hand corner. So we do with a quarter-page ad. We had one in April and in May. So we promoted the Spring Community Garage Sale, as well as our Fun Fest. In June, we did the Fun Fest in our golf tournament. And in July, we had our Cannon Valley Fair and the Open Air Fair. August, we're doing the Fun Fest, which is August eleventh. And so we do have plans for September, October, and November. Of course, you know November's gonna be deck the falls, so we can really get a crowd of people here. Yes, this does say Franklin Outdoor Advertising. That billboard is twelve-foot by fifty-foot. It is in Rochester, Minnesota, or it will be, I should say. It will be illuminated. It is on the intersection of Highway fifty-two and Nineteenth Street, right by Godfather's Pizza. It will go up on August eighth and come down on November twenty-eighth. So that's four months. Just to give you an idea on that, Mindot, and this is a statistic from two thousand and five. I don't know why they haven't updated this, but thirty-five-thousand vehicles pass by Highway fifty-two per day. In a month's time, that can be one million eighty thousand. And so it just compounds itself. And think in seventeen years, how many more people that really, really is. And so Cannon Falls went big. We're going to a billboard. And so hopefully, you get down there and check it out. Having Fun, biking, I showed some of you this little magazine. Um, this is a magazine that has maps of all of the trails in the state of Minnesota. We started out with our little eighth-of-a-page ad, Treasures, Trails, and Treats. But more importantly, we have the full two-page spread of the Cannon Valley Trail with the Cannon Falls map and the Red Wing map. And so those are very good promotions. Inform Communications is the forum communications, the Fargo North, or Fargo, North Dakota newspapers. They own papers all over in Minnesota, Wisconsin, North Dakota, South Dakota. This is on their website, their e-commerce area. Um, if you, as, I know you can't read it that quickly, but whenever you see the blue, blue titles, those are links to those businesses. Those are all Chamber members that we tried to promote, as well as, um, like the golf clubs. There we go. All three of them, shopping, local foods. And there you go. So we were on their page. Two-hundred-thousand impressions, and like I mentioned, Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota, South Dakota, and North Dakota. What, uh, KDHL Website Takeover, this is the KDHL website, and for a day, Cannon Falls had the front page. And we promoted the citywide garage sale, brought people into town. That's a good thing. Hopefully, we can keep that growing. Then, in June, we had it all set up with Power ninety-six, classic rock. We wanted to try a different avenue, different group of people. However, we did cancel the Chamber Fun Fest on June ninth. We didn't even have twenty vendors to, to, to do this event, and so that's why we made that decision. And so at least we still got our name out there. Minnesota Monthly, Minnesota Monthly has three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand monthly website page reviews, two-hundred-thousand monthly unique website viewers. We participated in their Twelve Weeks of Summer Digital Package. We received seventy-five-thousand runs of site impressions, and that was from June first to August twenty-first. They also did a nice story for us, and this story was actually in the magazine with more than two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand readers, um, that will travel there this summer, or this year, excuse me. Seventy-eight percent of those readers find ads helpful when selecting travel destinations. Minnesota Trails Magazine, this is on their website. The top one is a sidebar ad, and the bottom one is the banner that goes across the top. They are there for twelve months. So we wanna keep Cannon Falls in front of everyone as long as we can. We also did, uh, Cannon Valley Trail had a nice article, so we placed a quarter-page ad, Find Magic on the Cannon Valley Trail and the Cannon River. And in the fall, we will have another ad saying Treasure, Trails, and Treats, plus Waves of Fun. So if you think about it, we've got canoeing, rafting, swimming, boating, fishing, the list goes on. We do have Waves of Fun in Cannon Falls. All right, the Minneapolis-St. Paul Magazine. This magazine has two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand unique visitors. This is their online part, with six-hundred-thousand monthly page views. Fifty-nine percent of them are women. Fifty-eight percent are married, and seventy-nine percent are bachelors, degrees, or higher. That's quite a demographic that we went after. We also went on to their e-newsletter new, um, listing with a one-sixth-page ad on the left, and that, we get a hundred-thousand impressions for a thousand dollars and sent to at least ten thousand people. So that will be going out sometime this summer. I don't have the exact date here. The Rover Magazine, I don't know if any of you have even seen the Rover Magazine. This is an RV magazine, and it talks about people living in RVs, people traveling. So we've got two great campgrounds in the area that are full of RVs. So we put an ad in. It's a one-sixth-page ad, but along with that, oh, no, sorry, that was just the one-sixth-page ad. Okay? Then, the Twin Cities Guest Book. When I pass those around, you can feel it. It's not a magazine. It's actually a book. These are in every hotel room in the metro area. That includes the suburbs, Minneapolis-St. Paul, all of them. And seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand readers per year, thirty-two-plus-million visitors per year, seventy-one percent of the visitors return within three years at an average rate of nine-point-two visits over those three years. And we're just thirty miles south. And in the story, in the Twin Cities Guest Book, that's what it says. Just thirty miles south of the Twin Cities, Cannon Falls is the home to miles of pristine trails, golf courses, casual dining, and a variety of activities for all ages. Excuse me. That is, excuse me, our 2021-2022 Advertising Campaign. Laura also has.
Um, so one thing, here, I can unplug this. Turn that on. So one of the things that we can also show with, um, let's see, how do we make that happen? Oh, there we go.
There it is.
Okay.
It's happening.
Um, so with all of the marketing that Kyle is doing outside of, um, outside of our zip code, what we also are doing is, I created this document that kind of goes, the imagery goes along with the information that's going outside in some of those printed magazines and some of the digital marketing that's happening. And we've got these posters up and around Cannon Falls. When these people are coming to Cannon, we've got this QR code right down in this corner here. And if people take their phone and they take, open up their camera app, and they take, they scan that, what happens is that when they do that, it will take them to, of course, I don't have that up. Anyway, it'll take them to a, um, a website that has a whole bunch of different adventures that people have taken, and they've posted pictures of them doing a girls' trip in Cannon Falls. Maybe they went to the winery. They went, um, along the bike trail. They went to the brewery. They went shopping in our gift shops. Or they had a family day. They went out canoeing. They went to the library. They went to the duck pond, and they fed the ducks. And then they went for a bicycle ride. So anyway, so that QR code, it gives our shop owners, our restaurants, um, you know, any of our business owners an opportunity to say, "Hey, if you're looking for something to do, go ahead and scan that QR code," and they'll give you a whole list of things that you can do in our community, so that they can kind of fix their own adventure. So anyway, so that way, the people don't have to stumble and try to figure out, "Well, I don't know what you wanna do." They can scroll through those, and it will give them little pinpoints. It'll give them directions as to what they can do and where they can go in Cannon Falls. So, um, again, that's just kind of a little tool that will help them once they get to Cannon Falls.
Absolutely. Actually, Laura has made up four of those flyers, and they cover different, like, foods, recreation, shopping. And so there's a different theme on each one.
I can actually pull them up on here now.
There you go. One last thing, and I won't go way into this, just due to time.
I'll just pull up the adventures. So here are the different adventures. Oh, it's not even showing now. Here they are. So these are the different adventures. When you scan that QR code, that would come up. So you can eat and drink your way through Cannon Falls, so they could tap on that adventure, and then it will show them a map. It'll show them the different pictures. Um, you know, they went to Cannon Bells. They went to the winery. So they can tap on each of the pictures, and it'll give them kind of a little history of, um, things that they might wanna do in Cannon Falls. So anyway, that's where that QR take, QR code takes them. But I'll let Kyle talk about her new website.
Along with the new advertising campaign, the Chamber has updated their website this year as well. It's still a work in progress, but things that we changed were, there were listings of businesses under visitor information, community information, and chamber information, except they weren't connected. And so when you made a change one place, you thought you had it updated? Well, it wasn't. There were two other listings. And so everything has been cleaned up. There's just one place. You can go to our webpage and Cannon Falls Area Heritage, Cannon Roots, Cannon Valley Trail, City of Cannon Falls, The Beacon. And this will take you right out to their websites, and you can easily come right back. Here we have the Chamber Member Directory, our welcome letter, goes through our mission, purpose, and goals, and all of our benefits and services. As you can see, over on the left-hand side is our Discover Guide. Come on, I want that to come up. There you go. This was created by the By All Means Graphics. And the neat thing is, whoops, there we go. You can page through the Discover Guide right on our webpage. Interestingly enough, those ninety-nine or a hundred-plus leads that we've received request a hardcover copy. They don't want just, um, an easy to read or easy-to-go-to kind of thing here. So, okay? And then the other way we keep up to date is over here, whoops, let me just page down. Over here, we, on the right-hand side... Over here, we, on the right-hand side is our Facebook. So whenever I do postings there, they pop right up. So they're on our webpage right as, right at the same time. This Happenings in Cannon Falls was, you know, one day I would, I just needed to do another posting of something. So I'm like, hey, why not? You know, I just got done with the newsletter, that goes out every Wednesday, and we have listings of things going on. So in this, we list out all of the Chamber members' activities, the Chamber's events, the community events. That darn little post can get anywhere from five hundred to over twelve hundred views each week. And so we're out there, folks. And if they don't know about Cannon Falls, I don't know how they've missed it. So I'd like to thank our gold-level sponsors. We always put them down at the bottom so that we can show them off. They help us a lot. As I mentioned at the very beginning, the recovery grant, or the marketing grant, we still have that seventy-five hundred dollars that we've got to match. And so if anybody has any loose change, just come on over to the Chamber of Commerce, and I bet I can spend it. So, any questions? I hope the community enjoyed this as well. And if you do have any questions, you can always stop in or give me a call at the Chamber.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Very good. Thanks, Kyle.
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay, other reports, EDA, Laura?
Yes, I'll try to be brief here. Back in April, our EDA, we started to revise our EDA loan fund policy. We'd had a couple of our loan recipients pay off their loans, and it just made us kind of want to look through and revise any things that we may be needed to update. So we did make some changes to it, and nothing that was in regard to the minimum or maximum amount of the loan, but just some things, especially with the interest rates continuing to rise, not knowing how high they were going to go. So what we did is that we removed the floor and the ceiling that we had written into the policy before and just put it at a flat. The loan term will be a point-five percent below whatever the Wall Street prime rate is at the time of the loan closing. We also did add in that we aren't going to allow extra payments during the loan payment schedule, but they, there are prepayment penalties, and they can pay it off in full at any time. But we just don't have the software to allow for extra payments or whatnot. We would have to keep redoing the amortization schedule. Other things that we modified is that we did remove, we did have a five-thousand-dollar deferred loan policy if it was secured by a mortgage, and we just took that out because we feel that we've had enough activity with giving out our loans that we didn't really feel it was necessary at this time. If we felt that there was a lull or we really needed to start promoting it, or just trying to like, kind of start pulling teeth to try to get people to use that as a tool, we would maybe implement that at some point as a promotion or something for businesses, but at this point, we didn't think that we needed to have that as a term of the loan, so we actually removed that at this point. But other than that, that's kind of all that we really did. So most of the other things all stayed the same, but we just, like I said, we just felt that it was a good time to look at it and review it, not just keep it the same as it always has been. We just felt that it's kind of our job to continue to look at that, review it, especially in the times that we're in, so making sure that it makes sense for us, makes sense for the business people that are wanting to build their business and expand, or to come here too. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Public Works.
I think everything we had was on the agenda tonight. We're going to keep working on the compost situation.
Very good. Park Board.
Earlier tonight on the Consent Agenda, the pickleball courts. So I just wanted to bring up special thanks to the estate of Irene Carnell and Karen Schwengels. In May of twenty-twenty-one, they gave a donation of four thousand five hundred dollars to the city to be used at Eastside Park. So we're using that money towards the creation of some pickleball courts there, and we'll see how popular those courts are. Another thing, not to get too sidetracked, but I couldn't be more disappointed slash angry at the state government that the bonding bill died this year. Nothing is promised, but the John Birch Park project was greenlit, it was published, it was on the governor's list, it was approved by State Representative Barb Haley, so the Republicans in the House, and the fact that it died, and we go back to square one. So along those lines, we as a community are not slowing down. And Keith Myers and Bucky Lindo attended and talked about improvements to be made at John Birch Park, with a goal of hosting the amateur state baseball tournament by twenty-twenty-eight, at least getting the bid in there so that we can be considered. To make that happen, a lot of things have to change, but we'd like to get that ball rolling. So they approached us to talk about, instead of starting with the wall project, that will go back to square one, and we will try to chip away at the state, same as we did this year, next year. But the third baseline, Keith is already fundraising and talking to the city about what can we do to replace that dugout, possibly put a press box slash concession stand above it, make it a multi-layered thing, attach it into the grandstand, and then more details to be named later, to improve it and make it a site that could host the state tournament. So that's pretty much all we had at the Park Board.
It's disappointing. We went all out on that presentation of the Bonding Committee when they came around, and I thought it was in the bag, got to the governor's desk, and then all of a sudden everything died up there.
It's sad.
That's sad, really is sad. Okay, Finance Committee.
Yeah, we had, we discussed the recycling contract, and that and the twenty-twenty-three preliminary budget, which will both be on our August sixteenth work session. The other item we covered, we're starting the process on the fire department contracts with the townships, but that's in a very early, early stage on that. So that's it.
Okay. Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, we had a few items. We had one, two, three public hearings, and they were all approved at committee level and onto the city council, which we approved tonight. And one was a warehouse for Allied Valve. One was adding on to Randy Retzko's warehouse for refrigerated storage. And the other one, we kind of put two together there for some lots up on the Bluff Drive, and to make them buildable by Norton and Geisbers. And we had to get, give them special, I don't want to call it permission, but passed so they could go into Bluff Impact Zone to get those loan, get those lots, so they are buildable. All those were approved, like I said, in the.
Stephen. I will make one correction there, to be able to build in the Bluff Protection Area, not in the Bluff Impact Zone.
It, yeah.
For the Bluff Protection Area?
Yeah.
And then we decided to move the August Planning Commission meeting to August fifteenth, correct? Because of the primary the week prior. So if anybody has something they want to put on the agenda, needs to talk to Diane by July twenty-eighth. That's it.
Okay. Library Board. Nothing? Okay, let's go around the world. Dan, what you got?
A couple of things. Starting tomorrow, the Third Street Bridge will be closed. Their Redstone's back in town, they have to fix some cracked concrete at the south bridge approach. It's not on the bridge, it's at the approach, some concrete that cracked there, so they're coming down to fix that. So that'll be closed tomorrow, hoping to have it formed and poured by Friday, and then hopefully reopen Monday. And right now, the water tower's offline, they've started sand blasting and priming, and it's beginning of that project, so. And then, if I, I might be mistaken here, but I thought we flip-flopped the start times for the Park Board and the Public Works Commissions. So we'll be doing parks at five and Public Works at six.
For Derek.
Just for Derek. When we have, we'll leave it up, so I mean, Public Works a little more, and all that, because you're not going to need it all, right? So we might try and change that. Yeah, just moving.
Anything else, Laura? Jeff?
I do have a question for you, Jeff. At the bottom there, Fourth Street, there's the speed sign is, does that belong to the county?
Yes.
And how long do we get to keep that?
I believe that they brought that as part of the construction project. They've been receiving complaints about speeding on Fourth Street. I don't know if it was residents or the contractor. And so this is one of the things that they're doing. We've stepped up our enforcement presence along there as well, trying just to ensure that it's safe for everybody that's using that area right now during the project.
Okay, what, in the past, we've looked into getting something like that for the city. Has there been any movement on that?
No, it's one of the things we've talked about. Our biggest problem is it's something that we can only use, you know, certain months of the year, and we just don't have a garage or anything to store it in. And you can store them outside, but it does lower the length of life on them.
Well, the biggest problem we had was on seventeen. We wanted to lower the speed limit and put one of those signs there.
And if you recall, we.
Only doesn't seem to.
Yeah, we went through the process to, you know, create an urban zone, which was what they directed us to do, the assistant engineer. We've sent it to them, and the head engineer sent it back to us and said, it's our road, you can't control it. And then it was moved up to the mayor and the administrator, because it's at levels above me. We've pretty much done everything that I can, I can try to get the speed limit lowered. And again, we weren't seeking all the way up to Sunflower, we were just basically looking the top of the hill, McKenzie Court. There, there actually. And the responses I've gotten essentially was, well, if it's a concern for the city, you guys should construct a walking path away from the roadway, acquire land and.
I wanted, I wanted it out to Sunflower, but the county didn't seem to think that.
And the speed study didn't show that it would be supported, you know, based on the traffic volume and stuff to go that far out. But as we start seeing development along seventeen potentially down the road, we're certainly looking at and revisit it, but it's going to take probably annexation development that's going to tie in on top of the hill to really get the county's attention on it.
If the Hayes property annexation.
If it moves all the way up.
Oh, well, because that's going to come out by McKenzie Court there.
Yep.
Right at the top there.
And also, I mean, they're the two, as my brother-in-law, that say, least helpful signs in the world, and thirty mile an hour speed. What does that tell you? You know, we go to fifteen then, or? I wish that we could just put, you know, post it.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're sort of stuck because it's the county's, you know, roadway. We have the same issues with Fourth Street South, you know, trying to get them to post signs, put the speed limit as you go into the curves to the roundabout. And the county engineering department's answer was, we don't post speed limits on our roads, they're set by statute.
That's helpful.
Until, you know, they did post up some signs that say, you know, your vehicle might tip over after some vehicles tipped over.
Put up some state statute books.
That might help. But as that development occurs, once we actually get some physical structures along there, I think we're standing a better chance than just in the planning, you know, design portion yet.
And as Bill asked too, I don't think I heard, how long do we get to keep this?
I don't know. That was brought in separate from us.
Okay.
I just got an email saying, hey, we're going to be bringing this and putting it for this project.
Okay. We'll keep it as long as we can then, we'll just move it around.
Yeah. Somebody's got some spray paint, we can repaint it under the city or something. I'm not going to ask too many questions then.
Okay.
Hey, Diane? Ethan? Let's go around the world. Laura, you got anything? Mia?
Nope.
Bill?
No.
Derek? Mary Jill?
No.
Steve?
Me either.
I'm just going to say one quick note, there's one meeting before our next council meeting, and that's, the Trail Board meets on July twenty-sixth.
Yes.
At six-thirty. That's all I got. I take a motion of adjourn.
All moved?
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Montgomery, you all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.
Boom.